Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order here at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Masias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil. Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
We do not have any remote electronic attendance. Is there public comment this evening, Chief?
No.
Okay. Um, on questions on the agenda, just two items to note. You received the information from the October budget session that's related to the grocery tax for item six point three. Um, and we are pulling item six point four for a further discussion. And we will bring that back. So we start with six point one. A resolution approving the special event application for the TBK Quad Cities Marathon and Road Races scheduled for Saturday, September twenty seven, twenty twenty five, and Sunday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, closing certain streets more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic and the use of public right of way in conjunction with said event.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of council, we're recommending approval of the resolution as presented for the special event. Uh, we have a longstanding agreement with the Quad Cities Marathon. I believe it's a fifteen year agreement. This is, I believe, the fifth year or fourth, probably the fourth year. Um, we're recommending approval and we're also advising you that in our discussions with them that during the, during this event, the roadway will be open even though the construction will have commenced on the sixteen three overpass. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Masias. Um, discussion. Can, can you remind us of how many years we have on the contract with them?
I believe there's at least eleven years left.
Okay.
That was a fifteen year agreement.
Okay, thank you. Um, hearing nothing further. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Six point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to apply for a state highway permit for the Illinois Department of Transportation and to execute the necessary forms for temporary closure of the ramp along I seventy four eastbound to Third Avenue River Drive in conjunction with the Quad City Marathon and Road Race scheduled for Sunday, September twenty eight, twenty twenty five.
Uh, this particular item, we're recommending approval as well. This is in conjunction with the item six point one, and this is ordinary customarily what we do, and it will require, I doubt, approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six point three, an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax. Bob?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you pointed out early in the meeting, uh, I did provide, uh, at the mayor's request, documentation going back to our October budget workshops wherein we had discussions at length about the upcoming, um, twenty twenty five freeze on the growth, reduction in grocery, uh, tax as directed by the state of Illinois through the governor's office of a one percent reduction. As you know, we did build that into the current year as well as in the, in the subsequent years since we do three-year budgeting. So as you look at the modeling in the, in the, uh, spreadsheet, you can see clearly where we were at in twenty twenty four in terms of our fund balance for our general fund, which is our operating fund. And you can see the impact of reducing the, uh, sales tax estimated at a million dollars. And estimated because the Department of Revenue can't convey to us specifically what exactly that dollar amount is. So we used best, best information we had available and made the assumption that it would be a million dollar loss. It may be greater, and I would suggest it probably is greater. But we used a million dollars, and then we spread that out over the next several fiscal years. By the time we get to fiscal year twenty twenty eight, we will have then fallen below the city's historic fund balance, which runs from twenty to twenty-five percent. So we're going to recommend approval of the ordinance that is before you so that the city can maintain a healthy fund balance in its general fund. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
Um, I appreciate the reminder in the background and walking us through that. I have fought pretty hard for trying to take efforts to not just automatically assume that we were going to be renewing the grocery tax. I think the state of Illinois has offered us this opportunity to take that look and say whether that was something we truly needed. Um, and, and, and hope to have a much longer conversation at this time about whether we could make do, whether we could find alternatives. However, with the, um, the absolute chaos coming out of the federal government, with the threats to removing municipal funding that are taking place at this time, the attempts of last week and what are likely to continue to be efforts to, uh, take that, that opportunity away, um, I just am not confident that we would be able to find alternatives. Uh, or if we could find alternatives, we may need to find them in addition as well. So I've long been a proponent of us trying to find a way not to approve this, uh, but I have to take a kind of a reversal there based on the, the national situation.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Timian.
Uh, I'm echoing Alderperson Schmidt's sentiments. The, I don't like regressive taxes that hurt, uh, the poorest among us the most. But we also are confronted with the reality of the situation. And, um, it is my personal opinion that a million is very conservative. When we look at our four major grocery stores and one percent of all food, it's, it would probably blow a larger hole in the budget. And this is money we're already spending and already budgeted for, and the state's currently collecting. So us transferring it from state responsibility to municipal responsibility, I think is the correct and responsible thing to do, just to ensure that things move accordingly safely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Vitas, do we have confirmation that all of the other Illinois Quad Cities have already passed this?
Yeah, we're actually late to the game. Um, there are those that have passed it. I believe both Rock Island and East Moline have passed it. I believe Mylan has passed it. Um, and as for beyond that, I, I couldn't tell you what they did in Silvis.
Well, it's also my duty to share information when I'm, you know, connecting with folks downstate and, uh, certainly did that when I was in DC with our, some other Illinois mayors. Uh, I think it's real, it, it's really important to communicate to the state that they really do need to support the municipalities who are directly on the ground serving people. And there's always a balance between, um, how we show that and the arguments around the LDGF and the fact that communities haven't gotten their full percentage for many years. You know, we're just not able to do without that state support and meet the needs of, of the folks we have here. So I just wanted to add that bit of information I had heard, um, from some municipal advocates in my work. Anything else?
Hearing nothing further. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We move to six point five. A resolution approving change order number one and final with Langman Construction, Inc. for motor fuel tax, section number twenty-four dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash GM, twenty twenty four asphalt resurfacing program for the amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars and four cents.
Staff is recommending approval of the resolution as presented, wrapping up last year's program for asphalt resurfacing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We move to our informational. Mr. Vitas, I mean, we did just give an informational yesterday.
We did. In fact, most of what you spoke, uh, spoke about is actually contained, if you'll notice, in the, uh, the February status and information report. Um, I think one thing I'd like to point out, several things, but one thing right at the top of the list is, uh, our, our rental licensing program. Uh, we have already issued one thousand, three hundred and eighteen licenses as of the writing of this report. So I guess, I guess we've turned that corner. We started with maybe four hundred, the first, little over four hundred the first year. Second year, we got up, up to, uh, I think it was closer to fifteen hundred, fourteen, fifteen hundred. And, and we're inching our way there again. But people are actually paying attention to it, and I think it is improving the quality of life, uh, for the tenants because of all of the inspection work that's going on in the community. I think there were maybe thirty-nine out of all of the rental properties that fall into that C category, which means that there's substantial work that needs to be done to improve the property so that it provides a quality of life to the person who's renting it. So really a great program, and it's paying for itself, which was the intent. And I think all along, that's what we wanted to see. So very happy about that. Um, you know, of course, we had the State of the City address yesterday, which was splendid and went very, very well, well-attended by the public, uh, both invited and probably other guests who showed up, and good media coverage. So, I mean, we really did a great job, and I think the mayor did a stand-up job of, uh, conveying to the citizens here. Uh, it's not just about us, but it's about our citizens who participate in that, in that process, too. It's unlike other cities. We do invite people to come and speak and share the dais, you know, or the stage in this case with the mayor and talk about important things, whether it was B-City or the work that Felix was doing, uh, for historic preservation in our community. Uh, those are all great opportunities for the public to see what Moline is all about. And it's, I think it distinguishes us frankly from, from many, many others. Uh, and kudos to the, the mayor and her team with, for that. Um, we are busy filling vacancies. You'll notice there's not as many vacancies as we used to. I think we've rounded that corner. I think we've become an employer of choice among local governments, and we have fewer vacancies because of that. We have a fully-staffed police department, which the mayor pointed out as well. Uh, that wasn't the case four years ago. You know, we were really down, but now we're where we need to be, and that's also true in the fire department. So we have really turned the corner, uh, in terms of our recruiting and our retention as well. We're not seeing that turnover that we saw as well two or three years ago. So all great things are happening. I mean, I can go through this list. It's, it's quite detailed. And I'm happy to talk about any of the items on here, and if I can't, there are those who can for you because it is quite a, quite an exhaustive list of things going on, so.
Anybody? Mr. Timian.
I just want to kudos the rental inspection program. I'm quite the avid social media user, and, um, in one of the Quad City groups, people will post, "Look at this thing in my apartment building." And right away, when they say, "Oh, Moline, call this number," call, so people know that the, the program exists, and they're recommending it to each other.
Oh, wow.
Because they know it's effective. They say, "Call this guy at this number. He's great. You'll work with the inspection team." They'll get it taken care of. And so there's a reputation already with the program that it's good with tenants. And they're telling each other about it.
You know, I did mention yesterday that it's working as it's supposed to. It's paying for itself, um, which is part of how we're trying to be responsible. But, but it's also easy for us to fall into the trap of like, everything's working. Ah, but please make sure we're looking for those things that aren't quite working and how we can tweak the program because it's now been, what, a year and a half?
Yeah.
Or so that we've had it.
Yep.
There's bound to be something that could be improved, and I'm sure this council will be happy to look at any recommendations that come forward from staff for that.
We're happy to do that. I mean, we're, we're always looking for missing buildings, too, because, you know, we didn't get them all.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I know Barry pointed one out just about two weeks ago, and, and, and I immediately knew what he was talking about. And I didn't know if it was on the list or not. Sure enough, it wasn't. So, you know, it's getting added to the list. It's a multi, uh, multi-unit building with seven units in it right on Twelfth Avenue.
Yeah.
So it's, I believe, at Sixteenth, right there. So it's all gray and boarded up.
Yep.
So anyhow, we are, as we find them, we're adding them as well.
And I, I also wanted to add, I, you know, mentioned things in brief yesterday due to our time and, uh, but I wish that everyone could have the conversations that Bob and staff and I in, in pieces get to have with, um, Christopher Parr, our Economic Development Manager. You know, I, I got one response today related to, like, walking the talk on development, right? And there are parts of the city that are still waiting for that investment, and we know up here how difficult it is to pencil deals. Um, but it is exciting when you talk to Chris and hear all the conversations he's involved in with getting things to us. Sometimes they fall apart. Sometimes they really do come to fruition, and we go to these ribbon cuttings, et cetera, et cetera. So things are moving, but we can't, we don't have an announcement yet down about the mall. We do have good conversations happening, though. I just wanted to reassure you that it's happening.
We're looking at all four corners of the city and everything in between. I can assure you of that.
Okay. Anything further?
No, that's it.
We'll call our regular council meeting to order. Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, loyal and under God, individual with a liberty and justice.
Do you have, uh, an invocation, Mr. Smith?
Your Honor.
Okay. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Masias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil. Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of committee in the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, and consent agenda items thirteen point one, thirteen point two, and fourteen point one through fourteen point six inclusively.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays that motion carries, non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number sixteen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development and business growth partnership agreement between Grow Quad Cities and the Quad Cities region.
Motion to remove from table. Unapproved.
Thank you.
Second.
Yes, I had to reach, read those words. You got it just right. That was, uh, Finch, seconded by Schmidt. So we have this motion on the table, correct? Discussion. Yes, Mr. Masias.
Um, I, I do sit on the board of the QC Chamber, which is, is a partner in that. So do I abstain now or after it's off the table?
Bill.
Bill.
I, I think the proper course for you is to actually recuse yourself.
Recuse.
Yes, you, you, we don't have extinctions apparently. Uh, you would recuse yourself and not participate in the, uh, discussion or the vote with regards to this matter.
So do I do it now or after?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll recuse myself from this.
Thank you for reminding us. Uh, anything further, Mr. Vitas? Explanation?
Um, nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, your Honor, I simply need to, uh, bring forward that I have a business relationship that exists with the Quad Cities Chamber. Uh, my marketing firm does work with them, but it is not a conflict of interest, and, uh, but I do like to notify when those occur.
Okay. Anything further? We see the changes we needed to see from last time to this time. All right. Um, thank you so much. If there's nothing further, roll call, please. Uh, so do I still say Alderperson Masias? And do I even need to say his name?
No, he's recused himself.
Because he recused himself, okay. Alderperson Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays that motion carries, non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Item number seventeen point one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of Haas Smoke Shop, Inc., DBA Moline Liquor Tobacco and Vape.
Motion to advance a second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Yes.
So, eh, since this passed law last week, you did, um, approve the amendments, uh, to the tobacco ordinance, creating the three different classes of licenses. So I suggest that you make a motion to amend, um, your, make a motion to amend the motion to, um, include that a Class B license be issued to each of these three applicants. So you would do it each time. Because they're all Class B businesses.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we should, um, specify that.
Is there a motion to amend this license to include it as a Class B?
Make a motion to amend the motion to include granting a Class B license to the applicant.
Second.
All right, sec, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Everyone understands what just happened, right? Because we passed our ordinance update last week. All right. Any further discussion? Can I have ro, roll call on the amended motion? Masias. On the amendment, excuse me, sorry. Roll call on the amendment. Okay. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
And now, uh, any further discussion on the motion as amended? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number seventeen point two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of Gray Stores LLC, DBA Vantage Point.
Motion to amend and add Class B license.
To the wording?
Not, not the correct wording.
Can we have that wording one more time? Mr. Schmidt, can you do it one more time?
Well, as a point of order, I don't believe we can make both those motions at the same time. We'll have to do two separate motions.
Oh, correct. Yes, we had to put it on the table and then to talk about. I'll call on you. Just work on your wording.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
Thank you. All right, that's Schmidt, and seconded by Timian. Now we have discussion where the amendment could take place.
Right.
Motion to amend, add Class B to the license.
Thank you.
Correct.
That works. That works. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schmidt. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call on the amendment. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
All right. Do discussion further? Hearing none. Roll call on the motion as amended. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number seventeen point three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of tobacco licenses in the city at the request of JS Liquor and Food, Inc., DBA Five Star Liquor and Food.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Mr. Timian.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, amend this motion to include a Class B license.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call on the amendment. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
All right. Uh, now, uh, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call on the motion as amended. Alderperson Masias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Okay, thank you very much. This is a far cry from our last meeting, three hours.
We compensated.
Yeah, we're, yeah. It evens out eventually. Um, I wanted to say a few things under miscellaneous then. Uh, one, Happy Black History Month. I, uh, uh, you know, in our own ways, uh, hope we can honor that history. I know I'm recalling back to our, um, one hundred and fiftieth celebration, um, where we did feature one of the first black Molineers, um, who was at, at the church, right here. And I apologize for not remembering her name, but I'm glad that we were able to feature that, um, at that moment in time. Um, secondly, last week, I spoke on a panel at the, in the Urban Growers Track of the Illinois Extent, excuse me, Illinois Farm Bureau's Everything Local Conference because I'm interested in adding to the diversity of our, um, industry, um, around here. I've been talking to you all about urban farming here, there, and everywhere, talking with staff, and, um, really had, learned some good things, uh, met some good people, um, at the, um, it's not the fair, but, the vendor fair, that's what it is. The vendor fair, there were a lot of people that had good, um, knowledge of state processes for doing this kind of thing, and then did, did have someone reach out that's a grower, an urban grower. Um, so I'm hoping that we can steadily work on that because it'll add some jobs and add some diversity to our economy. Um, but it was very helpful. Then, of course, use the time there to, um, work with our state lobbyists to visit with some folks, um, on the train and, um, set up conversations for other issues we've got in the strategic plan, so. It was, I thought it was a very good visit. Ms. Murphy.
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Masias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
No, nothing, Your Honor, such, but, uh, I would like to thank you for your restart of this speech. You spoke very well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
That's true.
Yes, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, uh, had the opportunity with my family to attend the Frost and Fire Festival this weekend. Um, it was a very good time. It was a new event. Um, certainly can be a little risky to pop up an event in February, but I think that it was well-thought-out, well-planned. We got very lucky with that weather, too. And, um, even though we didn't stay as long as we might at many other festivals, uh, we really enjoyed ourselves, and it was nice to sort of have that in that off-season so that we could go and then go in a little bit inside, get some hot cocoa. And so I just, uh, really appreciated that event. I think it's a good addition to the community. Um, look forward to seeing it hopefully grow in the future. I also have had the, uh, the advantage to attend some soccer matches in the new, it's Government Services Building, call it?
City Service Center.
The City Service Center in the old, uh, the, uh, former Bethany location. So that has been exciting that we're already using it, already able to have, uh, some of our parks and rec, uh, activities going on there. So have been, been going down there and, uh, seeing some of that construction finishing up, uh, in real time, week to week. But it's, it's just very nice that when we go and we bring these to life, that it can turn around and begin to start offering programming and activities. So, uh, very excited for, for all those kids that get to be on the program.
I forgot one thing before I turn it over to you. Please remind me, have I emailed you updating you on the situation around World Relief and federal funding? If I have not, then now is my time to update you. Last Tuesday, um, after the federal funding freeze, but actually last Saturday, after the first stop work order came out relating to services for refugees, um, I was approached by the Executive Director of World Relief, which is located here in Moline, um, about what that would mean to our community and the surrounding communities. Um, the facts are that there are two hundred and nine people who have been resettled in the Quad Cities since October, and that would qualify as being under the ninety-day resettlement program, which was what was targeted on Friday of, of a week ago. Um, and while the federal funding freeze has been rescinded, that program has not did the stop work on that. So World Relief, um, obviously was kind enough to tell us there are sixty-four people in Moline people in Moline that would be impacted by no services, no rent payment, no food subsidies, no, um, case management to get employment. And some of those people have come here as recently as only two weeks ago. So when you look at that doubling of our homeless population, if they were to be evicted because of this inability to pay, that's felt to me like a, uh, an emergency. And so we had good discussions with, um, the state on how this was going to impact, um, our community potentially. Um, we had good commu, uh, conversation with AQUABA and Quad City, um, Alliance for Immigrant and Refugees. Those two programs are mo, mostly funded by the state, so they're not impacted like World Relief is. But it also means sixty-one people in Rock Island, thirty-some in East Moline and over sixty in Davenport. Um, and I did the best I could last week, uh, short notice to organize folks on this side of the river to talk. Richard Brunk, the county board chair, has been very responsive because he has some connections with, um, employment, um, through different programs that report to the county board chair. Um, so he's been wonderful about reaching out to Ms. Osing, the executive director there. I just wanted you to know that, you know, real human beings will be impacted if World Relief doesn't have enough support. If we don't think, um, ahead of time about how the city could house anyone or, uh, who can volunteer to help. There's also a network of pastors who are trying to step up to find supports, um, for what World Relief needs. So it's, it's good that all these conversations are happening. Um, and I sort of left it with the city administrators to discuss some more. But I did bring it up in our intergovernmental, um, Illinois Side of the River meeting with, um, By State today. That's all the mayors and administrators on this side of the river. Um, and nobody had any concrete answers, um, but like is working on it and trying to converse about it. So that was pretty significant and you should know that as conversations are happening. Mr. Vitas?
Thank you. So, uh, just a quick reminder, next week we have our first roundtable of, of the year. And, uh, the big highlight will be, uh, kind of launching into our strategic planning process for this May and June. And, uh, as you'll recall, there was a, uh, big flow chart that I created back in twenty-one which kind of laid out a whole series of events that must take place. And we're at that stage now where it's time for the community survey as well as the business survey. So it serves as a report card to us as to how others perceive we're doing as opposed to how we report and how we perceive we're doing. So that we can then focus our attention carefully as we set up those strategic goals, uh, going into the May-June timeframe. So we will have Polco, which is the company that we've retained, who is a national company that conducts this type of research. Uh, well over six hundred communities across the country. Uh, they are the top dog. They are the company that does this, that, that most cities will go to if they want to get some great results. So we'll be sharing that with you. There'll be a presentation. You'll have an opportunity, of course, to review in advance what types of questions will be asked, asked. Uh, you'll see it's a very, very comprehensive, uh, their process is very scientific. And, uh, we've tried to make it clear to them that, you know, as we do our random sampling in Moline, we want to make sure that the random sampling includes literally all of the wards, all of the wards. And that not only does it include all those wards, but as we go forward with this company, you know, those who receive the survey and those who respond actually have the ability to be a part of a subscription process over the next two years so that as we have other questions, we can actually put those questions out to get responses from different wards at different times on different issues. So it's really, it's a great tool. Um, and I'm looking forward to that and launching that. You know, Ashley's been coordinating with Polco, uh, with my office, uh, with Barry and, and, uh, and it's been good so far. I would be remiss if I did not, uh, congratulate Ashley on her first big event outside of City Hall. Uh, yesterday at the, uh, State of the City. I thought she did an outstanding job and her historical account of the building and its relationship to who we are as a city. Uh, I think it really laid the groundwork for, for the mayor's presentation and the presentations of the others. So thank you very much for your job. Well done. And right, uh, no applause though. So anyhow, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, other staff, chiefs? Nothing to report. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, is there any public comment then for this meeting? No? All right. I need a motion to move to executive session.
Your honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C five pending probable or imminent litigation dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven.
Second.
All right. Motion by Murphy, second by Timian. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays that motion carries.
All right. Thank you, everyone.